As it is five thirty-one, I will call the Thursday, August sixth, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Norton Select Board to order. I see that we have all four members present, Brad Bramwell, Renee Delly, Michael Poole, and myself. We'll get started. I just want to thank everybody for coming in tonight. I know it's an earlier time. We anticipate that there's probably some interest overlap between the key discussion topics tonight, both the location for Town Hall and Senior Center, as well as the school committee's pending vote on what remote or what education will be looking like next year. So we will take our time with our piece. I know the school committee starts at six-thirty. There is no hard stop on our ends. We will every item on this agenda, it's full service, but that is why we're starting early tonight. So appreciate everyone making the adjustment to join. We'll move on to appointments, resignations, and retirements. So I see we have the reappointment of Miriam Parvee to the Norton Democratic Town Committee.
Motion to reappoint Miriam Parvee to the Norton Democratic. Actually, I don't believe that it's Norton Democratic Town Committee. I think it is a it is the voter Democratic representative for the voter register, I believe is the proper appointment. There's a letter here. Let me just read the letter.
Yeah, it looks like you're correct.
Yeah, it's the voter registrar. So I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Miriam Parvee to the register, the voter registrar.
The board of the Democratic representative to the board of registrars.
Thank you, Brad.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Michael?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
I too vote yes. Congratulations to Parvee. Yep. Next up, the appointment of Sandra Allerhead as a permanent member to the EDC. Renee, do you want to say anything about this one?
I sure do. You know, Sandy's been an alternate on the EDC for, boy, I don't know how long, but let's just say during her time, she's been a critical participant. She did a lot on the marijuana overlay and bylaw, so I'm certainly happy to move that Sandy be appointed as a permanent member to the Economic Development Commission.
We have a second?
Second.
A few seconds. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Michael?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
I too vote yes. Congratulations, Mrs. Allerhead. I do not see anything under licenses and permits or announcements?
There were no, I checked, I checked, there were no announcements.
All right, so on to new business. Item number one, discussion on FEMA map amendment with Condyne. Take it away, Mr. Unitz.
Yeah, sorry about that. So Condyne was looking at the floodplain running from Lake Winnicott up to their property on Leonard Street, and they found some discrepancies with the floodplain map, and Mark Dibb and Ed Capone are on tonight to give you an explanation of what they've found.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mark Dibb. I'm the civil engineer for Condyne. So if you've been near the site, you've probably seen the two buildings going up, so we permitted those buildings last year. We had some hurdles through conservation and planning, and we worked out everything. We were able to properly cite the buildings, given the floodplain that is mapped on the site. The Wetlands Protection Act does allow some work in floodplains, as long as you do it correctly. So we were able to do that permitting. As we went through the process, we did some of our own research through talking to some folks in town and looking at some of the mapping, and we started looking closer at the flood elevations. And a colleague of mine, or an acquaintance through NOAA, that when we moved, were able to move them into Norton over on Commerce Way, Ed Capone, who's an expert in floodplains, has also worked for NOAA, is a town resident as well, and he's retired now, began to start investigating as well. And I think at this point, I'm just going to turn it over to Ed and let him go through a quick presentation. We'll try to keep it as concise as possible. Ed is going to share his screen. I believe that's allowed, okay? So as soon as he gets that up, I'm going to give it over to Ed, and he will describe our findings.
Thank you, Mark. Ed, if you could just give your full name, so you can make sure we capture it in the minutes. Appreciate it.
Ed, do you unmute?
Yeah, unmute yourself, Ed.
Okay, how's that?
Much better.
Okay, my name is Edward Capone. I am retired after fifty-one years working as a civil engineer in Boston, and then as a forecaster at the National Weather Service here in Norton. I was asked recently to take a look at the Canoe River floodplain mapping, and I'll go through this, it'll take about twenty minutes. So if we look at the chronology of the FEMA flood insurance studies and the firm maps on the Canoe River, we see nineteen seventy-seven, seventy-eight, with the original maps, and there's a copy of the report here on the lower right. In eighty-seven, the map was updated from FEMA. The original study was done by a company called Anderson Nichols out of Boston, and the update was done by Camp Dresser McKee. Then in two thousand nine and two thousand fourteen, fifteen, there were more map updates. So what we're interested in is in nineteen seventy-eight, the one-hundred-year flood level on Winnicott Pond was sixty-six point four feet. You can see it here, seventy-eight. Eighty-seven, the thing that was done was the hundred-year flood elevation was changed to seventy-three point four feet, and it stayed that way throughout all of the updates from FEMA till today. You see the updates on H and H here, it have in this graphic. There's been no updates to the hydrology from nineteen seventy-eight through eighty-seven, two thousand nine, or two thousand fifteen. The flow that was used for the hundred-year storm is the same in seventy-eight as it is today in the flood insurance study. So the line here that I'm showing from Bay Road back to one-twenty-three is basically the study area. What I did look at was when they updated that halfway down in this paragraph, you see for Winnicott Pond, the water surface elevations for floods for the selective recurrence intervals, i.e. the hundred-year, were calculated based on a reservoir analysis of Lake Sabatia to see a ton. The flood elevations for Winnicott Pond were calculated using the Lake Sabatia elevations and the characteristics of the hydraulic connection between Sabatia and the Wading River. That has to be a misprint, because there is no hydraulic connection between Lake Sabatia and the Wading River. What I did find was there was a seven-foot rise in Lake Sabatia in the nineteen sixty-eight flood, which is commonly known as the hundred-year flood for this area, this area, the river. So there's a seven-foot increase in the hundred-year flood from seventy-eight to eighty-seven on Winnicott. There's a seven-foot increase from normal pool elevation on Sabatia to the hundred-year. So that's all I could see for the correlation. I was not able to get the study that was done in eighty-seven. So when Mark came to me, I said, Mark, this is what you got to do. You see on this graphic, the red line? It says that FEMA today is saying that over eleven hundred feet of roadway on Bay Road is overtopped by the hundred-year flood. I said to Mark, that's four football fields in length. You've got to go and get surveyed to give me the crown of the road, so I can see the high point of that road, and then I will tell you what storms would have been near the hundred-year and would have overtopped that road according to this mapping. So that's what we did. Mark went out and got the survey, and did a lot of survey here in the area. What I found out was Canoe River ends at the outlet to Winnicott Pond, Snake River begins, and it goes down to Lake Sabatia, and the outlet of Sabatia is the Mill River. So I had a look at this downstream control, which is controlling the level of Winnicott Pond. So I looked at the latest hydrologic, hydrology, hydraulic studies for the design of Lake Sabatia, I-495, the Hockamark Swamp Flood Insurance Study. Upper-left graphic at I-495, Mass DOT, this bridge here, the base flood hundred-year elevation is sixty-six point seven feet NAVD. That data. If you go up to Todd, I think it's not called Toad Hill Pond Road, Toad Hill Road, walk to the end of it, park your car, and walk three and a half miles to the east, northeast, and northeast, you'll come to another flood insurance study done by FEMA at the other end of Hockamark Swamp, where the starting water surface elevations are between sixty-three and sixty-four feet. So that was another thing I was looking at, because there was no hydraulic analysis done in the Hockamark Swamp area on the Snake River to give us a good idea of what's going on. Also looked at the two thousand six new dam at Lake Sabatia. The hundred-year elevation is sixty-four point nine NAVD. So if you look at this chart here on the right, hundred-year peak elevation, sixty-four point nine. Interesting thing, you can see how flat this whole watershed is. The OG crest at the dam down at Lake Sabatia is sixty point zero feet NAVD. The low point under the bridge on Bay Road at the outlet to Winnicott is fifty-nine point six feet, same elevation. So basically, no slope in this whole area. Another interesting thing I want you to look at is the one-half PMF peak elevation of sixty-seven feet. What the engineer did here when they designed this dam, they had to design it for something much, much bigger than a hundred-year flood, called a half PMF, developed from something called a problem maximum precipice, which is thirty-three inches of rain in one day. So the half is about seventeen, sixty and a half to seventeen inches of rain in one day, that they designed for this elevation of sixty-seven feet, which is, of course, above the hundred-year, above the five-hundred-year. I still cannot find the seventy-three point four number anywhere, so I'm getting some clues here on this information. So what Condyne did is they got the LiDAR, the field survey, we updated the hydrology and upgraded the hydraulics. So I have something to start with. The FEMA map down here at the top of Lake Sabatia at Field Street is sixty-five feet NAVD. The Mass DOT elevation of I-495 is sixty-six point seven feet. If you travel and walk through this big wetland, Hockamark Swamp, you see the FEMA elevation there is sixty-four feet. So we got to put some cross-sections in here, run a hydraulic model, and come up and find out what is really going on at the outlet to Winnicott Pond, because that, from what I can see, that thing was never modeled in any flood study. So FEMA has a hundred-year elevation of seventy-three point four feet. When I came into the town in the mid-seventies and used to go to Ann's place to eat, I used to say to my wife, let's drive down and look at the dam under the Winnicott Pond, because I always thought there was a dam there. Never realized that there wasn't one until I couldn't find something on the National Inventory of Dams, as there wasn't one. And then when I looked at it about three weeks ago and found that it was just, just water, just sitting there, no dam. So it really started, I started questioning the maps. So what we did is, from all this information, on your left here, you can see that the LiDAR images and the cross-sections that Condyne took, and just showing you Winnicott Pond here, I-495, one-twenty-three up here, I-495, the Snake River going into Lake Sabatia down here. And what we did is we looked at the culverts and the new bridge openings that we put into something called the Oregon Engineer Hepraz Model. So originally, on Plain Street, you see these three culverts here, very old. I've got a couple of blue lines in there, just kind of show you what the opening is. It really couldn't handle very much water. So now, the opening today has, it's been blown open to a bridge, it's like thirty-five feet wide, so it really handled a lot of water. And the graphic right below that is the bridge on the Bay Road, outlet to Winnicott Pond. On your right here is showing the hydrology, which FEMA has used the Wading River gauge in Norton to develop the hydrology for the site here on the Canoe River. So the seventy-seven flood study at fifty years of peak flows on the Wading River, that was used. Two thousand nineteen, two thousand fifteen FEMA study used the same hydrology from nineteen seventy-seven. What I did is I updated that and transferred it to the Canoe River, so at least we got the effect of climate from seventy-seven to two thousand nineteen, when we ran the model. So this is showing a profile Snake River down here at I-95, up to Plain Street. This is kind of what the profile looks like when you use the starting water surface elevation of sixty-seven point six down here at I-495, and you run something called the Hepraz Model. The dash line up top here, the blue one, is the FEMA flood profile for the hundred-year, whereas the Hepraz Model showing this through the structures, we've got the hundred-year down here. It's basically sixty-nine and a half to seventy, right up through this portion of Winnicott upstream through Plain Street. The Q one hundred, I didn't mention these, but the Qs you saw earlier, eight hundred fifteen CFS. The Q one hundred, based on the latest hydrology on that method that FEMA approved back in seventy-seven, is eight hundred sixty-five CFS. One of the big floods that we looked at, two thousand ten, luckily, the Canoe River at Plain Street, there was a USGS gauge there, and they measured eight hundred CFS going through that site, two thousand ten, which was also considered near the hundred-year flood. So we thought we had a pretty good flow there to check our new flow based on the Wading River. So when we ran, when I told Mark, I asked Mark to get us all the information, we threw this into the Hepraz Model, and we examined four extreme floods. Nineteen fifty-five August tropical storms, sixty-eight, right after snowmelt in April, nineteen ninety-eight, an extreme June event, and two thousand ten, multiple rainfall flood events. All near, just below, or above the hundred-year. You can see how I have them ranked here. Fifty-five was a little below, sixty-eight, two thousand ten are considered the hundred-year, nineteen ninety-eight, I'm going to show you why that was above the one-hundred-year, what we think was above the one-hundred-year. So what we're looking at here is, there's a stretch of roadway over eleven hundred feet long, that according to FEMA, is underwater from one of these flood events, from anywhere from one feet to the I-495 side of the crossing, the outlet, to four point four feet, as you kind of head up in that low area, heading up towards the Chateau Restaurant. So there's a big area here where there's many, well, many feet, several feet of water over the road in these floods. But what I did ask Mark to do was, you've got to talk to the people who live there to tell you that this road has really been overtopped, and he couldn't find any. What we did find out in our last meeting is nineteen ninety-eight, I have it at this possible level here, and I'll tell you why I have it at that level and everything as we go on, but there was some overtopping of the road, for maybe fifty to a hundred feet, a few inches, according to the model, in nineteen ninety-eight. So I'm going to just talk a little bit about the record flood on the low Canoe River system. I call it the Great Flood of nineteen ninety-eight. This map on the right here shows ten inches of rain fell and parted the watershed, and I'll throw a approximation of the watershed on there. And I had the luxury of the rainfall data, because I've been keeping rainfall records in Norton for forty-five years as a co-op observer for them. And when I went back and looked at nineteen ninety-eight, I looked at how it rained. It really rained in about a twelve-hour period. So when I looked at the rainfall in nineteen ninety-eight, according to the atlases used then, whether you had, you looked at the three-hour, the six-hour, the twelve-hour, the twenty-four-hour rainfall, was all greater than a hundred-year rainfall event for that, that event. I remember how bad that rainstorm was here in Norton. Now, the current NOAA atlas, which updated the old TP forty, says that that's a six-hour and a twelve-hour hundred-year event, and the rest of that event is really a little bit under a hundred-year rainfall. The thing is, is the Canoe River comes out of the Lake Massa Fog area up in Sharon, and it comes down. It takes about thirty-six hours for the water to peak here. And the problem we had with that water peaking here then, around the fifteenth, was we got another two point four inches of rain right on top of that, as that whole system was peaking. So we had about ten inches of rain in a short period of time, and what we were done, we were told that, as you can see here on the Snake River, I tried to get ahold of the Ton and FEMA people, and I couldn't get ahold of them in the last couple of weeks, but from their flood district notes, they're saying that anything north of Field Street to the municipal boundaries of Rainham Norton or Eastern, that's below sixty-nine feet is a problem for flooding. So what I did is I started the model at the I-495 at sixty-nine feet NAVD, ran it back, and sure enough, you get some water over the roadway, maybe about a fifty to a hundred feet of length of roadway, a couple inches, the parking lot at, well, we see, Chateau, there's some water in the parking lot. And then Plain Street, because they blew open that culvert through a bridge structure, now you get some nice flow through there, and we're keeping the elevation around seventy feet from Plain Street upstream to I-495. This is with the Q one hundred based on eight sixty-five, which is from the Wading River So as we go upstream and we look at the vent here, this is Plain Street, you can see that the culvert now is handling the water, and it's really handling because it's not only open, we're using a starting water surface elevation, which we think is more realistic than seventy-three point four. So the blue line is showing the old seventy-three point four elevation. This water line here inside the structure is what we modeled with eight hundred sixty-five CFS going through the Plain Street structure. Well, then, as we get up, up towards one-twenty-three, one of the last cross-sections I looked at was the difference between seventy-three point four NAVD elevation, which is current, current FEMA, and the new seventy, about seventy feet here. This is whether I use sixty-nine to start my water surface down at I-495, or sixty-seven point six. There's five hundred feet more of lateral flooding in this section on the site from today's FEMA elevation. So there's a vast improvement in the floodplain. Mark, can you describe what he found on the plan?
Can I ask a question?
Okay.
While I know it may not be one storm that's considered a hundred-year storm, you did not look, I don't see any mention of two thousand six, and if I could be mistaken, this area was underwater in two thousand six for weeks. This whole, from Winnicott to Leonard Street, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that was the year where water was just coming up out of the ground. Did you guys not?
Was it two thousand five or two thousand six?
Two thousand and five, two thousand and five.
Yeah, I did, I did look at two thousand five, and you know, the rivers that we associate with this one, it was bad, but it wasn't like as bad as sixty-eight or two thousand ten or ninety-eight, so.
Really? Okay. I just, I remember attacking this area.
Was there water over the road, Bay Road?
That whole area, I know Leonard Street was shut for weeks in two thousand five, and I know, I'm trying to recall within, and I know that the flow over Winnicott, kind of, over to the roads on Bay Road, they had to do something with that flow area on the backside of the other side of the street on Winnicott. But like I said, I'm not, he had a question, I'm not an expert in hydrology, but I just remember, I didn't see any mention of that two thousand five area.
Yeah, that was one I was thinking of throwing in there, but I didn't. But I mean, if we could get some data or some eyewitness reports of two thousand five, certainly, we can look at that also. But you're talking, maybe King Philip Road was flooding, everything?
Oh, I know for a fact, it was the impact of King Philip Road. I know Downing Street, who, you know, my brother-in-law lived on there, he couldn't even control the water, and it was, you know, I mean, that whole area was just, and I know Leonard Street was shut for weeks, because water was just coming up. And that's why, that's why we mentioned this, and I didn't see any mention of it, and I wasn't sure if that, I know it was a collection of storms that hit us, I'm not sure if any of the other storms were considered a hundred-year storms, but.
Well, you mentioned water was coming up, was it coming up out of the ground, or was it coming up from the river system?
I'll surrender, I don't have that knowledge.
Okay, well, why don't I jump in here on this, so the plan in front of you.
This is Jack, just a quick question as we're going through this, and I appreciate the time that's gone into it. Can I ask ultimately what you're looking for the board to do? Is there a recommendation that's going to be asked, or I'm not seeing the connection to us at this point.
This is more of an informational meeting, to inform the board that we plan to file a letter of map amendment to FEMA with this data, and we're just kind of introducing it to the board prior to filing, in case there's any questions or even concerns on what this map amendment would do to properties in the area or for the town of Norton. So we're just kind of, right now, just providing information, and in a way, looking for support through the process. We wouldn't want to start having meetings with FEMA and have the town, by way of the selectmen or some other entity in the town, be averse to it, against the change. So we're just looking for input right now. We're not particularly looking for any kind of approval, or we don't, you know, it's not something that needs a vote or approval, but we do want to share the information with the town, let everybody absorb it. And so I guess the last thing, what the information is, is this change. We're basically going to provide evidence to FEMA that the hundred-year flood elevation should be elevation seventy versus the currently mapped seventy-four. So on this map right here, the light cyan color outline is the seventy-four contour, and the red is the seventy contour. So we, basically, that shaded area, the purple is shaded area, is what would be changed. So those areas would no longer be in the floodplain, and it affects about three hundred acres in this area of town, and affects roughly around a hundred and fifty properties. When I say that, you know, that line traverses a property to some extent, you know, technically it may not, you know, really affect, it all depends on where a house is, or where some upland is. But, so what this is, is what, how the FEMA map would be affected. It affects everything from some, some of the properties around Winnicott Pond, all the way up to our current development up at one-twenty-three and I-495. that is what, and again, we are fully permitted on our buildings that are under construction. We do have a Phase Two, which is not particularly affected either way by this change, so it's more of a, you know, we found this error in what we feel is just a mistake or error in the calculations of the FEMA mapping.
Mr. Chairman, how does that change the, does it change any of the permitting? Does it change any of the, I mean, why even go to them?
Other than, you know, we put in some time and effort, once we figured that out, it directly related to us, it would allow us potentially some additional parking on site. These buildings and the way warehouses work, they can benefit from as many extra trailers can be on the site as possible. There would be an area of the property that might be able to have some ground-mounted solar on it, because solar is not allowed in floodplain, it's a regulation in Norton. So, you know, some ground-mounted solar could be, could be added to our property, but as far as overall approvals we've already gotten and approvals we are seeking in the future, there's not a significant change. And then as well, though, there could be houses around Winnicott specifically that That um you know, to put an addition on it, they may not need as much approval. Or a pool or, you know, it could be many properties that could benefit actually more than we can and we've just done the work. And um especially Ed, he's done this for fifty years and once he saw, he feels it's a mistake, he. He'd love to fix it just as a resident of Norton.
Uh believe me, I retired and I know Dave Costello, who ran that golf course, and my retirement was to go over there and golf. So I'm, it's not like I'm really a fan of what it what's going on, but it is what it is, but I told Mark that the other day, but. Um yeah, I saw this and I said, something does not look right, but anyway, the FEMA, LOMC process. This is not a like one-week process, this is gonna take quite a bit of time because. You can't even get a hold of people, there's nobody even in the in the offices, many federal offices, so this would take a long time regardless. And with many eyes would be looking at it, so it's not like a quick process.
Any other questions from the board?
Jack, I don't have any questions, I mean, I like. Um I I appreciate the information and certainly the work that everybody's done on this and and Ed, thank you so much, I I know that this is uh, you know, volunteer stuff for you. Um but I think that this is certainly something that FEMA needs to weigh in on and and I don't know if this has been in front of. Um Jen or the Conservation Committee and and if it's relevant for them, but um certainly I think that there are uh. Um you know, if something's not correct and FEMA needs to be back out here to do some evaluations and that should take place.
We we understand that the, you know, FEMA will have a lengthy process of review and um. We can, you know, if it if it seems like a good idea, we can definitely make a presentation to Conservation as well, or they can. Uh review this um meeting.
Yeah, I the only concern I would have, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, um. If the only concern I would have is the water concerns of always since the beginning of this project, you probably attest this is. That's always been the issue, it's always been everyone's concern as as respect the the water in the area. And lowering the floodplain, if that's what I, that's how I interpret this presentation of what FEMA's floodplain would be. Would just concern me and how that affects the residents long-term on um, you know, what standards are.
Yeah, I would, I would echo those comments and strongly advise that you guys meet with Conservation. Maybe not in a in a in a public meeting, because as you said, this stuff is here, but they are far more. Um intelligent on this topic than I suspect any of the four of us are. Um learned a lot from listening, appreciate all that, but I think Jen um. Jen would get a lot more out of this and have a lot more um insightful feedback about the impact. Uh yes, somebody in the.
Uh yeah, this is Julian Kadeish, um I I am a longtime member of the Conservation Commission. And uh you know, they may well have identified an error, but from from the point of view of local administration. And local decisions, we can't make any decisions based on this finding until it is. Confirmed and agreed upon by FEMA, so they may well have identified a. An error which needs to be corrected, uh and it seems quite justified by the information that they have presented. But I think it's gonna have to go through the process uh at the federal level, until it does. It can't really influence what we do at this level and it's useful information to look toward. A future discussion and eventual decision-making process at FEMA, I suspect. They will have to come out and confirm and then they will make a decision.
Yeah, Julian, this is Ed, yeah, I I made that real clear to Mark that uh this is a long process and this can in no way. Effect any of the town's decisions on uh regulatory floodplain and floodway that's there today, this this will not change any of that. But FEMA looks at it and studies it, so this is probably years down the road.
And I agree as well, uh you know, if we file particularly for what we call phase two for the park, um it will have. The mapped FEMA elevation, you know, we're not looking for any relief, anything like that. We, I agree one hundred percent, it would have to go through FEMA and go through the entire process, um which I'm sure for a project this size. Would be a lengthy and very detailed review by FEMA.
Alright, uh any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, uh thank you gentlemen for presenting, that was uh good information and best of luck with the review process and. Uh I think it's the suggestion of the board that you uh. Get in touch with Jen Carleeno and and just present the information as we have tonight.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Item number two under new business, request from Meaton College to close Howard Street from August seventeenth to August twenty-third, eight AM to five PM. Mike?
Yeah, they they have withdrawn that request, um then they don't need that now.
Very good, uh any other new business, Mike, you good? Alright, old business, uh I suspect this is why most of the people are here tonight. Um discussion and or vote on the Town Hall Senior Center Community uh Senior slash Community Center project. So to set the stage, we had our information session last uh Wednesday, I believe, Tuesday. I can't remember the days anymore, damn quarantine. Yep, um. We presented to about fifty-five uh or so residents with panel, um Dino O'Brien was uh. Great about setting the context, we had uh Mike Viveros from DBBW. And schools wanted to talk about the athletic complex, um and through the various options that were understood at the time since that meeting. Um and I think one of these was mentioned during the meeting, some additional properties have been mentioned as being available that were not done. At the time of of the preparation for these materials, uh I think there was two lots next to the police station that were brought up during the meeting. And then the uh there's a plot of land across from the entrance to the uh Henry Yell and Norton High School. That has been on a market, off the market, and apparently it's back on and they are willing to sell to the town. If that was a uh preferred option, so. I don't know how much consideration the board would like to give to those additional properties, if we would like to can focus our discussion on the ones that. Were reviewed in detail that the PVC has had a chance to.
Hey, Jack?
Yes, Renee?
I'm sorry, I I lost the audio for a minute, can you just repeat the last two of those properties that you mentioned?
Uh yeah, there's the the two, I think there's one or two lots next to the police station that were mentioned, not the uh. Discuss before and then um is it the Rich property, Mike, uh across from the yell?
Yes.
Well, and those ones that in particular has come, been available, unavailable, now apparently it's available. So um I leave it to the the board to have a discussion, um anybody who wants to start about where their their thoughts are at. Um I know we had a couple of open questions, Mike, including the cost of repairing Town Hall to make that a viable option for. A few years, accessibility of the Reservoir Street property from one forty as opposed to on Reservoir Street. Um I'm sure there was a couple of other ones, Renee's probably got a list.
I think done and Mike kept the list, so I'm I'm interested in hearing the answers to the questions that we posed last time and then having a discussion beyond that.
This is Dino O'Brien, uh one of the questions was the cost of running sewer from the Reservoir Street proposal. Up to Elm Street, Mike, have you been able to find anything out about that?
Um I know that Water and Sewer was checking with their engineers on that to see what there was, alleged, I have not heard back. I'm trying to remember what uh Mike Viveros put in before, does anyone on your committee remember? I know he did put uh. A figure in for the sewer.
I thought he mentioned four hundred thousand on a call, but he estimated it and it wasn't included in the money for that.
I think you're right, Renee, you can say four hundred thousand before.
Right, four hundred.
Yep.
But that, I I don't know how firm of an estimate that was.
I don't think you can get a really firm number until you get in there and see how much ledge you're dealing with.
Right, until they do the engineering.
Right, and then, you know, to do, find a much better number, you'd have to fund an engineering study. You know, for that targeted response, so.
I've never heard.
Pardon?
I'm sorry.
I say, I just, I think you're, you should take the four hundred thousand estimate and factor that in, I think it's a good faith estimate. From the um from the architect.
I I thought, though, the issue was, and what he said he was gonna try to figure out was the actual distance. Because I thought that that four hundred thousand dollars wasn't really looking at the distance from the wherever the. I don't know, is it a manhole at at Elm Street?
It is.
The location.
Yep, he he should have had that that distance, I mean, it's on, it's on the map.
I've never heard the word ledge used more than the last three months.
What I interpret from that is four hundred thousand goes to one point two million.
Uh Mike, this is Ed Capone, I had one slide that I was supposed to show everybody and I forgot about it, it's the most important slide. And Peter Wiggins will, Peter Wiggins will, he's been too quiet, so he'll love this slide. Can I show it?
Yeah, is this bad way back tracking error or I'm confused?
Yeah, uh if it's something that could be shown quickly, um.
Real quick, be real quick, uh this just came out today from the weather service from NOAA and um. It's pretty unusual, but if you look at the first nine storms, we've had quite a track up the coast. And they just come out, there's gonna be another ten to fifteen storms before the season's over, so this is like way beyond normal. So it's just something to keep in mind, just an outlook, the good thing is when this happened in two thousand and five. And they went into the second alphabet, which they're gonna be doing this year, none of them hit the US, but this year we've got this. Tendency to come right along the coast, so something to keep in mind.
Alright.
Just want to share that, sorry, but that's the most important slide from my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Capone, appreciate it.
Back to Town Hall.
The second question was the um cost of a shortcut from Mansfield Avenue down to the reservoir site. And that is crossing private property. I do not have an estimate for that, but it is quite the hike from one forty down to the property. You know, because the property is after the bend, so I would imagine that that would be substantial, but I am sorry, I don't have an estimate, Mike, do you?
I don't, all I I do know that property is for sale for a million dollars.
Okay, so it would be a million to create the shortcut prior to purchasing the land on reservoir. So that would add an extra million to um to option three. So that would, that would increase the cost.
Why, why would we buy the the parcel?
If you wanted to create a shortcut between one forty. And the parcel in order to circumvent the residential traffic on Reservoir, on Reservoir Street. That was the question.
It, yeah, I was creating the access road, but I guess my question, and maybe I just don't understand the parcel, I don't know why we would purchase the entire parcel.
For that.
I I guess that would be up to the owner, whether they wanted to sell a portion of their land to create a roadway or not.
I'm not, I'm not sure if it's the parcel that has the narrow access, in which case. The remainder of the lot would be worthless to the owner without the access to uh one forty, because it would be landlocked. If that's the parcel that's adjacent to uh the proposed, the Wheaton site on Reservoir Street. It's large in the back, it has a very narrow uh entryway, if that's the parcel we're talking about. And I think that's the only one that gives us a direct line from the Wheaton site to one forty.
Is that the only one that's residential there?
I don't really know. Just that I remember the map, there there was one that's like a pork chop ma- uh lot, where it looks like it has like maybe a fifty-foot. Frontage on one forty and there's a lot of backs, backland.
Donna, do you by chance have them have, I'm sorry, Brad, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, no, go ahead, that's alright.
I was just gonna ask if Dinah had had an electronic version of the map that we can look at?
No, I only have a paper copy, I'm sorry.
Can you hold it up in front of your camera?
As soon as I get to the page.
It's, it's online, right? Do we put all this stuff online?
Yes, it should be online, it was placed on, I have, my map. Does not show access to. One forty, it kind of, it stops and the, I'm sorry, the lighting out here on the porch is a little bad. But here is the property and this is going towards one forty and you can't, you can't see that far.
It's the same graphics you usually have at Town Hall at the auditorium.
If I'm, if I'm reading, if I'm reading the map correctly, the only one that connects. The only single lot that connects the Wheaton parcel to one forty is the one I was mentioning, which. To co- get the contact, the um access to one forty, it would, if we bought it from the owner. It would make the rear portion of the lot, the majority of the lot, landlocked and useless to any potential owner.
Anyone have the parcel number on that?
How about my documents, I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Parcel two twenty-five?
Would that even be allowed from a zoning perspective to create an inaccessible lot, assuming not?
Well, that was part of the discussion, whether or not zoning would even allow for construction on Reservoir Street.
So I think that that points to another question, right now, um from what we heard at the info session. Area is residential, it is not vigil- village commercial anymore, so. If there was to book, go anything on reservoir, we, there would need to be a rezoning, I don't know if that would be spot zoning as suggested by one of the residents over there. Uh I don't know, Mike, or if you've had any experience?
I did find something. I did find a little something, can you see?
So we, didn't we, we posted these materials, I mean, I don't, I don't know why this material isn't up with our, yeah, I don't know why it's not up with our agenda, like. Meeting materials are supposed to be posted, um according to the remote participation guidelines from the state, so I'm I'm kinda annoyed here that I can't find it. Um where is it posted outside of the agenda and the calendar?
The best of mine are still not available on the PVC page, we have all the older materials, but. Um I don't know where it's been posted, I know we've asked more times than I care to remember and it's still not there.
I I assumed that the uh. Town Hall was taking part of the graphics I don't post to the PVC page.
I, I mean, I.
No, understood, Dinah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna search through, I know um and it's gonna take me a minute, so I apologize, but I I wanna look at this and I want us to look at it, um.
I think, just looking at a very short map here that I did find, Renee, Mr. Bramwell is correct, there's a very. There's a very narrow entrance between two lots that go to this portion of land that. Combuts the reservoir and the Wheaton property, so if you, it would render the, it looks like it would render the lot. Unusable, not usable, yeah, by the, by the owner.
So I'm on the PVC page yet again and there is nothing on there about this go-around. So, like, I don't know what more needs to be done to to get that put up there, I mean, I've. It's been sent to Charlene and yourself, a few times, I personally sent it to Charlene over a week ago. Um I know it was attached to the info session invite. Um we asked to have it put on the PVC page so people could find it, so it's uh as. Renee mentioned, it's it's frustrating to be sitting in a meeting and we can't find the documents, which is that the. Residents haven't had access to these. Which is that the residents haven't had access to these unless they've been looking onto my Google Drive that I've been sharing out. Uh, which doesn't seem like the best solution for something like this. So, hearing nothing but silence, I will share my screen, uh, from this piece. So hold on one second.
You have it, Jack?
I do.
I'm seeing if I filed it somewhere. I, I remember the email from Mike, oh, here it goes. From Mike to, our Mike, to Mike Veros, asking if this was the information. And I actually just found the email. But I suspect it's what you're gonna pull up.
Yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to.
If you can't, I can do it, I have it up.
Uh, yeah, cause I have to go into my settings and.
Sure.
Any restrictions?
Yeah, wait a minute, second. I just gotta find.
I'm having trouble finding it through my email.
Okay, can everybody see the, the screen the presentation should be showing?
Yes. Thank you.
Uh, no, no problem. I'm, now I just can't control. Oh, here we go. Okay, so.
There it is. No, you just had it.
I know, my game, my mouse is bouncing, um.
Okay. There, this one, here's, here's the entrance. Oh, I'm, I'm doing my mouse.
Yes, you are. Okay, so the entrance, so this is the property right now that we're looking at, right? My question was, can we somehow get access to it through one forty, right? Um, and you're saying this property here, who owns this property?
That property is owned by, uh, Keith Silver's family.
Okay, so that, is that the private property for sale?
Yes.
Okay, and then that's the property we'd have to go across. These are commercial properties?
This whole property.
I know you're pointing to, do you want, um?
So, so the property that you have hot, um, right there.
This one?
That's part of the Silver family property.
Okay.
The large pieces, and that all was rezoned village commercial.
This is now village commercial?
Yes.
And this is our eighty, or our sixty, or something residential?
Right.
Right? Like this was the part that with this funny parcel and then a portion of these two parcels that were wrong initially. If I remember correctly, because we looked at this from the, uh, the EDC perspective, um. Was there any look at this property for the town, for the?
We, we did.
Yes, there was. It didn't, it wasn't large enough to hold both of the buildings. And the, um, the proposal for the reservoir street property is to house both of the buildings.
Uh, and Dinah, if I recall correctly, um, Bob Menares had said that that was a very wet plot.
Very wet.
This one here?
Yeah, yes.
Mike, are you on the GIS?
I am. Yeah, that's what I was just looking at, how wet it was.
Not that we wanna shift, but I think, you know, from the discussion, um, I don't think there's any opposition. And I won't speak for the board, but I, I certainly didn't hear opposition to separating the, the two, the two buildings, right? And, and I'll be honest, the other one, I, I, I do like the other spot as well, right? That we were talking about during the meeting from, I believe was option two or your priority two. Uh, my concern with that is when I think about just the economic development, that's like a prime commercial area. And while I think it affords many opportunities that we weren't initially looking at, I just wonder if this would afford that same opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Was a piece that the, the PVC rejected during our review of the properties.
Right, but you said you did it under the context of two buildings, right? Because the buildings and wetness. Okay.
Yeah, there are vernal pools on that. There's definitely some conservation concerns there.
Okay, um, are there opportunities with the other, um, parcel on Mansfield Avenue, like, uh, Jen Carlinow had indicated? Um, because it is on the, the res for like grant funding? Mike, that might be your question.
The property, that property on the reservoir, um, this property here, she was talking about the other property.
Yeah, the one on Mansfield Avenue. I'm trying to find it on here. Somebody stop me when.
There it is.
This is it.
Um, so that property is so small, I, that I don't think it would support more than the COA. And their, and their activities. So I, I don't know if there'd be any, uh, grant money available. Cause I don't think we'd be able to set aside any of that land for anything other than the COA.
Oh, and so, so, I'm sorry, Jack.
Sorry, I was just, uh, as we were going through the, the properties with, uh, the PVC for evaluation. I believe we were looking at two acre minimum of buildable area for the COA.
What COA is?
Three acres plus for town hall.
Town hall.
Separately.
Separately, yes. So five would do for both, a little more than five if you separate them out, so. That needs to be buildable land. It can't just, you can't have those ones mixed.
You mean, we can't put it on the water?
I mean, that'd be fun.
So do we know what, what the, what the actual buildable land is out of this parcel that's, I mean, is it five point seven acres or is the parcel five point seven?
The parcel is five point seven.
Including the reservoir.
Including the reservoir.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand the, uh, the options completely that we are reviewing.
So, were there any other open questions, Mike or Dinah?
Um, the third question was the property, privately owned property behind the town hall. And I think Mike was actually gonna go over and knock on the door if he could get ahold of the homeowner. I don't know if he's been successful.
The, the homeowner has not responded yet and has not answered the door.
Okay, I would assume that's a no.
Not sure I'd answer the door for some.
And runs knocking on the door, so.
Yeah, I don't know I answer a door for somebody standing there in a mask during a pandemic. I, I'm assuming you had a mask on.
Yes.
The next question was the, uh, cost of doing nothing to the town hall and the senior center. And I know that, uh, Mike reached out to, um, Mike Veras to get a cost associated with determining how to find out what the cost is of doing nothing.
Yeah, I can share, if I can share.
I might have to unshare. There you go.
Okay. So, um, I asked, uh, Mike Veras, if, I said, if we are gonna renovate the existing hall. We would need to have a structural engineer, we'd need to have a mechanical HVAC air have architects, uh, look at what we could do, um, to renovate it. And that's where the eighty-eight thousand dollar, uh, price is there. The next step obviously would be, um, architectural design and oversight. My estimate there is five hundred thousand. And we would have to have a known as project manager, um, so for the life of the project, I estimated three hundred thousand. Um, and then if we were out of the building and renovations took two years. Figuring that if we can find some rental space at three thousand a month, would be seventy-two thousand. And then, um, to move the town hall and then move it back again after renovations. Um, a hundred thousand. We'd have to relocate the server room and all the networking, computer, printer. Uh, move from town hall to a temporary location and back. Uh, the estimate there was two hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, then, uh, the installation of a sewer ejector pump. We're currently on a cesspool, um, at the town hall right now. And, um, so this would allow us to put in, uh, an ejector system. Um, and pump back to the street, tie into the sewer. And then, um, the renovation of the, uh, town hall itself with, um, complete gut, everyone have to move out, we'd have to completely gut the structure, the inside. And, um, that's four point eight million. And then, um, the other question Mike Veras had, he said, so you don't have enough parking in that parking lot anyways. Uh, so if we were gonna have to add a parking lot, we'd still have to buy the lot next door for a million. And, um, put in drainage and a parking lot for five hundred thousand. Um, also on, uh, here, I have just to be determined, um, that I'll have to be a study on, um, hazard abatement for any asbestos that may be in the building. It's an old building. And also I did not put in here, um, contingency, which would probably be another five hundred thousand. So we're talking anywhere between eight and nine million to renovate, uh, the existing building. And I know.
That does not include the council on aging either.
No, uh, this is just the town hall. And if you remember, the building inspector said, once you start cutting into those walls, that building's gonna fall down. So, but anyways, that would be, uh, my estimate for that. Um, at the COA, um, previously we had talked about if the COA was gonna stay where it was. Um, it would be, it wouldn't be worth it once again to renovate that little building. Um, so the issue is the garage behind the building. And before we had, uh, talked to the school department about constructing a new garage. And they came back, um, they had an estimate of eight hundred thousand dollars to construct a new garage on their property. So we'd have to spend eight hundred thousand on a new garage and then we'd have to tear down both buildings. Uh, the garage and the current COA and start construction. So, and if, in effect, the cost of doing that would be equal to, uh, more than purchasing some of these properties that you're looking at.
So, um, Mike, couple of questions on this. Um, you mentioned the parking, right, and the additional land purchase. Is there some, some requirement now that we're not meeting why we would need to have additional parking and the existing wouldn't be sufficient?
Yeah, I could get that, I'll get that from you, from the building inspector, but I know definitely he said that before.
And, and does that include all the extra emergency management equipment that's there? Is, or not, like, could that be relocated to potentially behind, um, that other building in the back where the gas tanks and stuff are?
Highway department.
Yes, thank you, I couldn't find the wood.
I don't think they'd be able to relocate it there. We'd have to look about, look at moving it offsite. I think their concern then would be that they'd want it somewhere where they can keep an eye on it. That's why they.
Doesn't that, doesn't the, the water department have a, a bunch of land out there?
They do.
I mean, I'm just interested, like, I just find it interesting that, that if we have to have no parking, but yet, or more parking, but yet we don't have that requirement now. So if you can find that out, that'd be good to know.
I think Renee, one of the things you have to realize is that once you start fiddling with something, the old regulations.
Right.
Are out the window and you have to comply with the new regulations, so.
No, I understand.
That's an issue.
And again, we asked for this because if, if the other doesn't pass, right, we have to have some sort of, we have to have a plan to fix town hall. I mean, the building's, you know, gonna come down at some point.
And with all due respect, I would charge you that you have to have a plan to fix both buildings. You're not just talking about the town hall, you are talking about your council on aging also.
Well, I, and, and I'm not disagreeing right now Dinah, but you know, I, we've asked for information on, um, specifically what we would need to, to have that up to code and we have not received that. So without that information, I can't comment. I mean, while, while, you know, there's, there's certainly a difference between something that's unsafe and, and something that just isn't as big as we would like it. Um, those are the things that we have to consider. So. Mike, I don't know, have you received, have you received anything more? Cause I know the last report we got was, was, um, not quite what we had asked for. I don't know that, that there was a number in there that I think Chris just said that the building should be replaced.
Yeah, I don't have that in his information in front of me from before, so I don't remember.
Okay, maybe we can get a similar write-up, um, to Dinah's point that does the same thing for the COA.
And I think, you know, one of the, the key things in what Mike has just presented was the top figure from the architect to do this study to find out exactly how much. No disrespect to, uh, town hall employees, but I think if you're gonna start a project of this magnitude, you need, you will have to spend the money to begin with to get concrete information. I mean, Chris can, Chris can guess, but, um, you need to find out for sure. So, I, you'd have to get an appropriation of eighty-eight thousand dollars to actually firmly determine the cost of doing nothing.
I would say it's probably, wanted to formally do the COA building as well, so probably closer to, you know, one forty, one thirty.
Yep.
Yeah. So maybe that's our, maybe that's our second warrant article. Maybe we don't, we don't necessarily go down the path to say, here's, you know, we, we want something. If, if the other should fail, right, that, then the next one would be, well, this is what's gonna cost us to renovate. Maybe it's, it's the step. I don't know, like, I'm thinking of time, right? Like, how much time do we have?
Right. It's not the cost to renovate, it's the cost to find out what the cost to renovate will be.
Right.
And I think people need to be aware of that.
Yeah.
And this doesn't take in effect, I mean, that's just getting that building up to, to snuff so they can work on it, but doesn't, I mean, that business space is space, right? I mean, it's, it doesn't really create any space for the, for the overflow that we already have. Is that correct, Mike?
Correct, it doesn't. And I know that in that other report, um, it said that we were about seventy-five hundred square feet, I believe. Below what we should have.
And it doesn't address any of the space that the fire department would pick up?
No.
Nope, we'd be, we'd be, uh, we'd be taking those requirements and, and pretty much cutting them in half. We'd have to.
Which is another.
Which brings me to the fifth question, if I could, Jack, which was, uh, to talk with, with the two chiefs to see what their future needs would be. And I did have a chance to speak with both the police chief and the fire chief. Um, the police chief's main concern is the lo- the server room. The location of the town servers are in the police station. And adequate space for future needs. The fire chief is looking forward to this passing and moving into the um, section of the town hall that is not the former gymnasium, and he feels that that will address his space needs. You know, going forward, but, um, the big thing that they both had as a takeaway was the need of a community room, that Norton does not have a large community room. Where departments can hold trainings or even large public meetings can take place. And with the construction of a new town hall in the vicinity of both the police and the fire station. They feel that those issues can be addressed, which is of their primary concern.
So, um, Dinah, ma- may I ask, have you guys done a value, what's, what was, when we built the police station, was it twenty years ago at this point? What was the lifespan of that building at that time?
The lifespan was twenty years.
So we're already at the, we, we, we're supposed to already be planning for our new, cause when I look at, I mean, I've had the, I've had, I had a chance to sit down with Chief Clark and, and I'm looking at that space and he's showing me a great tour. I look at it and I see that first floor as being needing to be renovated. I'm not trying to add it to this project, but it looks like their locker rooms, they only have, they don't have enough full amount of, um, uh, women on the, on the police force.
Right.
Can have enough to, if we add any, and their roll call room is a closet.
Matrons, uh, the matrons locker room.
I apologize.
Yeah, and the, and the roll call room are woefully inadequate. What Chief Clark is hoping is that when we move to a regional dispatch center, that he can do some fidgeting with, uh, the current room where the dispatchers are and maybe move roll call into there. But the matrons room is woefully inadequate, as are the offices on the second floor.
So, so Dinah, his, his overall impression is with changes coming, um, and with what he needs, you know, for the next couple of decades. That the footprint of the current police department would be big enough, but renovations are needed.
Renovations are going to be needed, and he needs meeting and training space, which he is hoping to be able to piggyback and. Use a new town hall, you know, the new town hall is a public meeting space. For classroom trainings.
Sure.
And also, if you, if you've gone into the fire station on the second floor for their training area. It's. I hate to say it, but it is worse than the police station, they. They can't get individuals in there. Oh, and the elevators aren't working either.
That's a maintenance issue that we should be on top of.
They can't even, they can't even in those two spaces, they can't even have a meeting of the, all their employees, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, they just.
No, they can't.
I mean, they can't fit all their, their employees in there, right, I mean, the police, if the police department, I think, holds twenty to twenty-five people and. Fire department's less than that, I'm not mistaken.
But no, they, they cannot have a full staff meeting.
Hey Dinah, how's um? How big is that server room, do you know?
You mean the garage?
Yeah, it's, it's um one of the, it's the first garage bay, you know, that you would have. Pulled into when you were entering the parking lot, you're, you would drive in and pull into that first garage bay. So it's the size of a normal. You know, place to hold, you know, for the cruisers to, to go in and uh. Uh. Passengers. Exit the vehicles and go into the uh, into the station. But right now, it's, all this housing is uh server equipment.
And, and do we have in the plans for a new town hall another server room? I, I saw the figures, Mike, your figures were at like. Two hundred and forty thousand, right? For the server room to move and, and put back? You're on mute, Mike, I'm sorry, I think you said yes.
There is a server room in the uh, in the footprint of the new town hall, yes.
So, so I have to ask the dumb question, why in the world are we looking and planning for a server room in any of the buildings when we could? We could look at the cloud for a much cheaper option and by far more secure option?
I'm sure that's something that'll come up whenever there's uh. We move forward and the architect's doing his design.
Hmm. So can you list that on your, your price list there too, like, I, I think we should start having the conversation now regardless. If town hall is gonna go, whether it's gonna crumble to the ground or we're gonna replace it, let's, let's figure out what it's gonna cost to actually move. Our critical technologies to something in this century.
I think that would leave um, the chief, that would start to. Concerns on the space, and he's, it's so funny, you know, when I took the tour, he was very humble, like, um, you know, he didn't wanna say he had need, because he recognized. The town hall and the senior center, but I, I, I brought it up to him, like, you can have enough, he's like, um, we've got concerns, but. He was very um. He, he was very respectful and in what towns needs.
Hmm. I, I can't believe that somehow we built a building that was only supposed to last for twenty years, I, I mean, I'd like to know what the thought process was and what their plans were after that.
Brad, were you on the school committee then?
I can tell you that the uh. When the police station was built. It, it went out to bid and they started out, it was going to be a brick building. And it kept getting redesigned to get it down to a price tag that the town people would uh pay for. And that's why we have a, the uh outside of the building is like a stuccoed, that's similar to the town hall. And it was because they, we couldn't afford, we wouldn't pay to have a brick building put up, and so it was. The whole place, it probably, its life expectancy was probably downgraded due to. The fact that people didn't wanna pay for a better building.
So, so if.
It all came down to dollars.
Right, so now if it's, it's lifespan, right, and, and the chief is fine with using that building and remodeling, so to speak, or renovating. Is it, is, are we gonna be in the same position in five years that the thing's gonna start crumbling?
That would depend on the amount of maintenance.
And, and I'm asking this question because I'm, I'm wondering, is this something that we need to consider too and needs to get into this project? I, I don't expect you to have the answer by any means, but is it, is it worth us looking at, at it?
I think it's something that you look at in, through long-range planning, not just adding, you know, adding it at this moment onto this project. I think it deserves um more attention. Than adding it in at, at this moment. But I think it is something that the town is going to have to look at. Um. And not ju, not just Norton, but it's, it seems to be endemic with municipalities, you know, maintenance gets uh. Gets pushed aside for uh, for want of funding. And um. It is, it is something that you're going to have to address, but I would encourage you to address it properly as separate projects. And not, not do it now.
Well, Dinah, like I, here's, here's my, my thing, we can certainly move forward on deciding a location for town hall in the community center, like, that, that's not a problem, but I think that. That what my request would be, and I would look for the support of the board, is that before you come back to us. To say this is what it's going to cost, that we bring in that police department, because. The last thing I wanna do is put forth a thirty-five million dollar project for a town, and then three years later, in the same damn, whoops, sorry, same situation. And now we're looking for another eight or nine million dollars for the police department, so if we're gonna do this, I think we need to look at. What do we need as a town over the next several decades? And how's that gonna happen, right, we can, we can still vote and charge your group to move forward with locations on one project, but. We can't ignore all this other ancillary stuff and, and just expect that, you know, in a couple of years, I mean, this is gonna be hard enough to, to sell anyway. But if we have an absolute need versus a want, like, we need to get that in front of the people, and we need to know what the money's gonna look like. And we need to be smart about this, and if we have an opportunity for cost savings specifically in the area of technology, like, we need to do it, and, and. I, 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 I'm dumbfounded on why we would plan for a server room in, in this environment. Especially, you know, this goes back to my, my point earlier about the amount of storage space that we were planning for with the new town hall. Like, go digital. Right, like, we have so many opportunities here for cost savings and to be more resilient, and it, it's just, it's not happening. And that's my concern that, again, you know, now we're spending more money to build something. And then to Brad's point, right, people are, are, then we're gonna have to go back down, because people aren't gonna like that mon, that dollar sign. But we have opportunities to save in other places, and I don't feel like that's actually happening.
Well, with, with respect, Renee, I think what you're talking about is long, long-range municipal facility planning. And if you are intending to bring these two projects to a spring town meeting, you don't have time right now to do adequate. Full circle municipal planning. The building committee is working with the school department. Starting before this COVID problem, on the envelope study. Let us, that is the beginning of your long-range planning. You need to take that through, it may be five years, it may be ten years from now that you have, that you're asked. To address these buildings, but they need to have adequate planning in order to do that. To your point about the server, I have been at many town meetings. Watching the town request to digitize records, to get them into an electronic format. The townspeople have not been willing to take that step. And until the town is ready. To go full tilt, not just piecemeal with pla, with the plans from the planning department and the building department. But full ti, tilt into digitized archives and records, you're going to need a server room, and you're going to need storage. And right now, my experience sitting at town meeting, the town meeting members have been unwilling to fund that, because it is not. It's, it's not a tangible item that they can put their hands on and say, this is a closet, a virtual closet is something different to sell. But it is where you're gonna need to go, especially with your retrospective conversion for data. But you need to appropriate that through an operating fund. So I think you're trying to base a building on something that has to be addressed. Both on a construction side and an ongoing operational cost of doing business. Budgetary concern, and I, I would encourage you to not confuse the two, because you, you can't do that, it's, it's apples and oranges. So you need to make the commitment from a daily operational standpoint to move into the digital world completely. And then you can get rid of your server room. And all your servers, and all the wires that are going in, and all the telephone lines that are down in the basement of the fire department, which I tell you, were absolutely. Horrifying to look at. But they're a mess, you know, completely with the fire alarm system down there. It's not digital yet, it is not electronic, and the chief would like to move that way. But the wiring is just amazing, and unless the town funds through its operating budget. The ability to move all these things. To a digital platform, you're gonna be stuck with wires coming in and servers and decks and racks. And computers, and you're gonna be funding it from here until kingdom come.
So, so I, I agree with a portion of what you said, um, I think here's the problem, is that. When, I, I don't remember this being talked at in town meetings, I don't remember a proposal, and if, if it did happen, then I apologize, because I, I wasn't there. But I can tell you this, we, we brought no information forth to show what a cost savings would be from. Building a server room, hiring a company to run the wires and doing all the other infrastructure versus going to cloud. So I, as a resident, and I'm sure many residents, if you don't see that savings, if it's not presented to you and you don't understand the benefit or the value of it, you will not be supporting it. So when we go and, and we just per, present, again, this is what we have, we need the same thing, but now we need a bigger, right, that, it's. That's the argument, so we need to be better about planning. So if, if it's a matter of, yes, you have to plan for that, well, on, alongside of that, I wanna know. What's it gonna cost us to go digital, I wanna know what's it, what's it gonna cost us to go in the cloud?
Here's a proposal, eliminate the server room. Force yourselves to go digital. It'll. I do not think that that is something that will be palatable to the residents of this community.
I, I don't, I don't know why we would have to look, I don't know why we would have to look for approval for that, if we're looking to, to bring a new building on. Why aren't we upgrading infrastructure as well?
Because, because part of what you have, have here is a retrospective conversion project. You have to convert your town records, your voter registrations, your birth, your, whatever that is in the town clerk's office. You have to convert what is ever in the tax collector's office, the planning, the conservation, the recreation. The health, fire, police. Um, every record has to be di. Has to be digi, digitally converted, what you are storing now, not only in your server room, but in your closets, is paper. And you need to pick a date and say, as of January first. Twenty twenty-two, the town of Norton is going completely to digital. Then you can go out and you can get a cost for retrospective conversion of your data and your records. But you have to maintain those datas, data and records somewhere, and that digital conversion costs money.
Yeah, yeah, there are other options too, right, we, we find, we find a vendor that does it, but we're going off topic, I'm, I'm not gonna worry about that.
Right, but I'm just saying, you know, you, you're.
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm not.
Mixing two things, that's what I'm hearing, you're mi, you're mixing, you're kind of muddying the waters for something that is not in a construction. Standpoint.
So I think we're gonna, if, there's a lot of good threads that are happening here, but ultimately, I, I think we're getting a bit far afield.
Can't we keep pulling them, they're fun?
Oh, it would be great.
They are, they are, but I think uh, there's a portion of us who want to get off of this call and onto another call.
Right, no, I know what you mean.
Well, no, I mean, I, I think this. A lot of what we're talking about right now is very, very important to understand and to try to quantify before we seek. Voter approval for these projects. I think the, the task at hand is to try to figure out which locations we wanna prioritize to give the PBC the ability. To further the design efforts a bit, the, the presentation materials to work with the town and us. On some of these, call it bigger picture questions about what can we do? There's, there's a whole other topic that hasn't been addressed yet, which is what does the post-COVID landscape do for the amount of workspace that's needed? Um, a lot of town hall employees have been working quite successfully from home, do we need as much office space as we typically have? I don't know the answer to it, but we have some time to, to sit and think about that. Uh, and maybe that reduces the footprint of the building, I don't know, maybe it doesn't, maybe it goes up, because we need social distancing space, or maybe it breaks even. There, there's a lot of pieces that still need to get solved, but the, again, the, the key focus for tonight is trying to. Narrow down the site selection for these. So what I, what I would pose to do is I have my. My little cheat sheet here with the properties that we have, and just kinda go through, similar to what we did at the PBC. Um, with voting on. If we wanted to keep them in consideration. Narrow them down and then see if we can get to one or two. So. That, that's up to the pleasure of the board, how do we feel about that?
Jack, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna share that presentation too, just so we can reference it when we're talking.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure where we're all clear is that the town doesn't understand that, okay, we've just, we, we go through a override here, I'm sorry, a dead exclusion here. Um. That it doesn't um. Replace the need that the police station might have very, very shortly. And, and I think it's important that we recognize that and that, that's. There, and I, Dinah, I respect, and I don't mean to tread on you guys, I think you guys are doing a great job with this, I just wanna make sure that that. Your absolute strategic long-term planning that we're addressing all the needs of all the municipal buildings.
I agree.
And, so, Mr. Chairman, um, if anyone uh listening wants to see that information that you're sharing, it's on the Selectmen's webpage.
We also get it put on the PBC, Mike, because I think that's probably where a lot of people have been looking at all this, right, but. Um. Okay. Uh, all right, I'm gonna start with the Wheaton Lot, which is the lot on Reservoir, the thirty-four acre one. Um. For the senior center. Michael? Just, it, a, a yes vote is if you think that that would be a good site for it. Not that the exclusion of any others, but worth considering. So, Michael?
I, I still don't like you putting me first on all these votes, whatever, that's fine, no, um, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay.
Would you say, Michael, you're not in favor?
Okay, um, Brad?
I, I think it's worth considering.
Okay, Renee?
So, Jack, this is community center only?
Community center only, yeah.
On rez, right?
Yep.
So. So I'm, I'm gonna say um, keep it in consideration, only because we still don't have the answers to the two questions related to this, um, both. What specifically, what it costs, and could we do it to get access from one forty, and uh, we don't know the actual. Um. Or a, a better than an initial estimate for the sewer.
Okay. Um, I am a no on this one. Um, again, this doesn't need a majority to move forward, and just, we're gonna tally up who's got the most votes, uh, for a town hall on this lot. Uh, we'll, we'll mix up, Brad?
Um. I'm not, I'm not thrilled about it, but I still think it's worth considering.
Okay. Uh, Michael?
No.
Renee?
No.
And I am a no, um. For both. Michael?
No.
Brad?
I, I thought that's what we were doing before, I, I would say no to have a town hall alone, but. The, the yes was for both of them.
For both of them, okay, Renee?
No.
And I am a no, okay, um. The Mansfield Ave, uh Freeman Street, which is just the senior center, um. Brad?
Um, I think it's tight fit, but it's worth looking at.
Okay, Renee?
Uh, yes, let's keep it on.
Michael?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
Hey, hey, Jack, can I just ask real quick, um, on that, are there currently two residential proper buildings or just two buildings?
I don't know, Dinah, can you answer that?
Property?
You with that one?
Dinah, right here, are these?
It looks like two.
Are they houses or businesses, do you know?
I believe they're houses. They're houses.
Isn't one of them a house and one of them's a shop? I think one is not, not probably.
Just a nice woodworker.
Yeah.
Oh, right, where the uh picnic tables and such are out?
Yeah, so it's a wood shop.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Norton Middle School, for, again, this is for uh senior center only.
I gotta find that one, this one here, right?
Yep. Well, we'll start with you, Renee?
No.
Brad?
No.
Michael?
No.
I am a no as well.
Oh, look, we got one, one knocked out.
One's done.
Almost there, Danny.
So for the town hall site. And we'll mix it up, we'll start with um both buildings on one side. and we'll mix it up. We'll start with um, both buildings on one site. Um, Brad?
Which site are we talking? You mean any site?
Yeah, the, the town hall site, so expanding where the
Okay, at the seventy East Main Street.
For both buildings, right?
Both buildings.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's worth considering.
Right. Uh, Michael?
No.
Renee?
Uh, not both, no.
Okay. And I agree. I think no for both. Um, stepping back to town hall only, uh, Michael?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well.
Yes, we got another one.
Excellent. That's good. Um, so those are
Maybe I should vote over. I wouldn't want people to think we're agreeing.
Oh, that's true.
They, they might think we talked about this beforehand.
Common sense, though.
Watching this, I think they're realizing we're figuring out as we go along. Um, okay, so those are the sites that have been developed and priced to this point. Now we have the Reservoir Street property that we talked about before, adjacent to the Wheaton one. Do we want to consider that or do we restrict ourselves to the ones that have been able to be evaluated?
Say, uh,
Can you rephrase it?
Yes.
But explain it. I, I missed it.
Do we want to consider any of the other properties that we have been made aware of?
Oh, okay.
Between the info session and tonight? Or do we restrict our view to the ones that have been considered and worked on and studied by the PBC and the architects? Um, and have had these estimates worked on?
So have, have we with any of these other properties? Have there been discussions already with the PBC on these properties?
I believe, and Dinah can correct me if I'm wrong, the rich property was on the original list of twenty-something. And then when we polled, it was not uh, available. It was taken off the list.
It had been, it had been removed from consideration. The two properties um, adjacent to the police station are very recent and were not part of our original discussion.
So my, my initial thought on that is um, the rich property across from the high school, right? I, I think it, it poses almost all the same concerns as putting the community center by the middle school between traffic and availability and things like that. And I think um, the uh, what I would just call the uh, unknown uh, potential that this property then becomes unavailable again, um, we should just take it off the list. Uh, that's, that's my thought.
Okay.
My, my concern with that particular property, and I'm, I've never walked it, so I don't know, but to me from the road, it looks like it slopes downward. And I'd be afraid that the rear part might be uh, cost an awful lot to um, engineered by bringing in fill and things like that. And I'm not sure if it's wet at all.
It's right here, right?
Uh, yeah.
So I, I would have to agree. I don't think right now for what we're looking at, I don't, I don't think the Riley property really makes, makes much sense there.
Okay. So I, I agree with, with that. So that piece of property is off the list. Um, looking at my handy dandy, super technical sheet, we have been unanimous on
But wait, Jack, you didn't talk about the other one.
The other properties next day, I want to talk about the two properties that were brought up to us at an information point next to the police station.
Yep, okay.
Um, I think the permanent building committee should do whatever they can to investigate those two properties because I think part of this is we look at just kind of a municipal center. And as we look at future growth, I think there may be a need for more land in that municipal area. And I think that would be something that we should at least get a pricing on and see if it makes sense for planning in the future.
So for future planning, not necessarily for this project.
Right. So what I mean by that is we look at the, the, the piece of property between town hall and the police station. And twenty-five years ago, it was four hundred thousand dollars and we all kick ourselves and look at it and say we should have bought it. Uh, but I think this is one of those pieces of property that we, depending on what the pricing looks like in this, that I think the um, permanent building committee should look at. And, and we'll see if it makes sense to kind of add it, if it makes sense to add it to this project.
Right. So let's, uh, Mike and Dinah, can you guys do some preliminary investigations on costs, topography, what composition is and see what potential future uses could be?
Okay. Jack, let me, let me add to that. Um, so when we think about a municipal co- complex, right? Um, I personally don't envision the community center being a part of that. Right? I, I think that that should be separate. Um, I like the idea of looking at that property, but I like the idea of looking at that property um, and, and long-term specifically when we think about the police department building and its uh, end of life status. Um, I, I don't necessarily, and Dinah, I'll ask you, if, if we have you guys look at this from a community center perspective, how much time are we now going to add to this process? Because we need to make a decision and they need to move on if, if we're planning anything. And, you know, I'm fine with saying, look, we, a- and again, I think the police, um, whatever we do with the police department, I think that needs to be included um, with this whole project. So if we want to just say, hey, look at it overall and we'll decide, you know, whenever. Um, but I, I want to understand what that timeframe is because I know this has been going on for a long time and, you know, um, times of the essence.
Right. So you would want us to investigate the price for purchase for those two pieces?
And, and the usability of those for the, and the usability, yes.
And, and that would be for police expansion?
Or public works or
Okay, yeah, because I'm going to throw a spanner into the, into the tire right now. You know, at some point you're going to have to look at a DPW facility.
Right. And, and that's what I think. So I just want to be clear, Michael, were you saying look at those properties for the potential to, to seat the community center there?
I don't know, not for the community center. I'm really, when I was thinking, envisionizing it, I was thinking the public works department. I think if we be have a public works department, uh, you know, even though um, uh, Mr. Silver says he thinks he has everything he needs, I don't see, I think it's going to be bigger. I think he's going to have more need than what he has in the current location. And or if the police station needs to be expanded or, or so on and so
Knocked down or whatever. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to be in a situation where this, a new residence on that property and we're kind of handcuffed here, looking around town, saying, oh, I wish we bought those properties twenty-five years ago.
We can look, we, uh, I think the recommendation is to look at those as a, call it a strategic acquisition for future development.
Future development, okay.
For now, not in the context of town hall or uh, senior slash communities.
And, and Jack, if I can ask for Brad's opinion on that too? He isn't.
On, I definitely think that we can't, it, we can't go wrong looking into property that might be available for future use.
Right.
We uh, we always seem to pass up potential sales or buys on things and kick ourselves ten years later. So it'd be nice to do something uh, thinking it forward for change.
Great. All right.
Okay, so we'll look, then the consensus is that, that you would like the building committee to look at it for purchase in terms of future planning?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Particularly future planning that can hit the spring town meeting horn.
All right. So I think the only one that we have not uh, addressed is that additional property on Reservoir that has the access to one forty. The one that was studied by the PBC, evaluated, felt it was tight for both sites and has some um, the grown-up pooling. Do we want to consider that for just the senior center?
Where, where is that, Jack? Specifically?
That is the one next to the Wheaton Lot. Um, I think it's next to the lot number one.
Yeah.
Just to the left of one.
This one right here?
No, go up.
Yeah.
Go up, it's two.
Go up, it's, it's to the left.
No.
This one, yes. I thought this is Keith Silver's lot, I thought.
Correct.
That's, yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, I heard Wheaton in there.
And there's only one entrance over right, low, right?
Right, right here, in between its other two parcels.
That's correct.
Right.
So I, I thought that we had already talked about this and, and you guys said it with, with the vernal pools and it was too wet.
That was the building committee's initial thought about that piece of property.
So you guys looked at it and took it out of your listing because of that particular reason?
Yes.
So, so Jack, I, I think that they did, I think they did the work. I mean, I, I, I like this location. I think it's set back. I think it gives the wooded, you know, a nice wooded area. Um, you have access to the rez. You know, it's, it's bigger that potentially we could have, you know, walking trails, things like that. But if they've already taken it off the list because they deemed it not to be appropriate, then my, in my opinion, I, I support their decision on that.
I'm just, I do also. I, 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 they've put a lot of time into this and if they've uh, already looked at it, I don't want to waste any of their time looking again.
And um, I'm, I'm with them. I believe a senior center at uh, the corner of Freeman Street and uh, council on aging, I'm sorry, on the Freeman Street in the town hall at the uh, current location is the right choice in the town.
I think one of the things I'm sensitive to is the uh, for, for lack of a better word, the criticism that we received at the July um, special town meeting or June special town meeting, the first time when the Elm Street property was up, was that not enough properties were, were considered. Uh, I think we're ticking all the boxes to show that we are, we've done an extensive search. They have been pared down. And this is how we've gotten to whatever our recommendation will be. Speaking of, so I go back to my handy dandy, old school chart. It looks like we have unanimous four check marks on two locations. The senior center slash council on aging at Mansfield at Freeman and the town hall at an expanded town hall site, including the purchase of the lot next door. Um, do you have any discussion on that? Is there anything else that anyone strongly feels that we should consider?
No, I, I think that's, it, I think we've discussed it, but I would like clarification maybe on the thing that I would like clarification on is the the price of the town, the town hall at seventy East Main in prefer, in number one versus number two and the justification for it being so much higher in number two.
But uh, are you looking at that separate sheet that we got, Brad?
I'm, I'm looking at the sheet that has like the four options with pricing.
Yeah. I don't have that. That was uh,
Yeah.
That was the one we asked them to put together and, I mean, I, I, let me, let me actually, I'll see. Jack, do you have that in your files easily, electronically accessible?
You, you on your email? Because I can just share it.
Yeah. You want to just shoot it to my email?
Yes. Your town or your uh, your personal?
Town, please.
Got it. Audit summary by site.
Oh, I have it from Dinah on July ninth. As soon as you said that, I was staring at the email. Okay. Ha ha. Okay, hold on, I just gotta share it.
By, by my quick uh, rounding off math, it looks like it's one, one point uh, about almost two million dollars more with the uh, town hall by itself on its site versus the town hall with the uh, musical, so either council on aging or musical center or
Right, right here.
Yeah.
So I think uh, what I would suspect is driving that is you have uh, an increase in your soft cost budget. If the sites are different, it's more likely that it's going to be a separate architect and engineer um, that's providing those. I don't know why the construction costs would be substantially higher. That looks like it's a
It's site work.
Excuse me, Jack, it's site work associated in uh, or in the order of preference, which was, you know, um, the municipal campus. It has the uh, town hall at sixteen five. Um, there was a lot of site work that went in with that which brings, you know, on uh, that brings the other one up, four A, there's the site work that's involved with it.
So I, I think, I think Brad, um, no, I mean, looking at the total cost, yeah.
And that's, we kind of knew that. I think one of the, for me, one of the motivating track, this was the desire on the residents. I originally was, uh, I liked the idea of a municipal center, but when we had our public hearing, uh, it was very clear that the residents wanted to set in feel that the council on aging or re- or community center made sense within the municipal campus. Um, it was some, something that was repeated over and over again. Um, and, and, and I, and after that meeting, I kind of, I switched that two option where you have the two separate sites.
So this, this, this is kind of interesting how you, how you showed the numbers on here, though. Now that Brad brought that up.
I mean, that, that's the only, I don't, I don't have a problem with the sites that were you, you know, the majority is picked. I just, I'm just interested in why the construction budget is one point two million more if that's the only building on the property. And it's, I mean, yeah, the soft costs are more.
Well, and, and the overall cost. I mean, to put two buildings on, it's going to cost us like one point three million dollars more, but to put one on, it's
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure that, I'm sure that there's a reason. It's just I'm, I'm too dumb to figure it out, so I want somebody to help me.
Mr. Veras would have been the one to do that.
Yeah, can, can we ask him? Because it really, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense if, I mean, there's no shared cost here because these are two different locations.
I can certainly ask him Monday evening at our meeting.
That'd be great. Thanks, Dinah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, other than that, tentatively, it seems like, I think we want to go with the number two, but I just, I'm just interested in finding, and I'm sure that the towns voters are going to want to know the difference because it's more than the uh, difference on the uh, total project.
Right. We can, I'll definitely ask that question Monday evening at our meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right. With all that said, um, and Claire would entertain a motion to endorse the selection uh, for option number two, town hall at seventy East Main Street. Senior Center, Community Center at one sixteen to one twenty Mansfield Avenue.
Removed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, we'll go to the vote. Uh, Michael?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
I two vote yes. So uh, motion passes, Dinah. You have some direction.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you for the hard work, uh, and thank you committee for the hard work they've done.
Certainly will. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dinah. Appreciate everything and we'll see you Monday.
Yes, you will.
All right. Uh, Tom added his report and Mike, in the interest of time, I'll ask you to uh, speak quickly.
Just uh, two things. Um, you had asked me to check on a tent for town meeting. Um, I did and uh, the cost of a tent is nine thousand dollars plus another two thousand for blocks to hold the tent down. And the problem with the blocks, and I talked to um, the school department and um, Wade is not, will, said the field cannot support the vehicle that would have to take those two thousand ton, pound blocks out onto the field. And the field cannot support the two thousand pound block. So um, that option uh, does not look possible.
So Mike, can I ask, um, and Jack, I believe the other meeting is over. Um, but can I ask how it, our initial estimates for the tent were four thousand when we talked about this for the other meeting? And then now it's nine?
Uh, I'm, I don't, I don't remember that we were ever, ever that low.
Yeah, because he said it was four thousand. If we wanted to, then it bumped it up to ten.
Well, this, this tent is a tent, as you can see from the diagram, this is a tent to fit a hundred people. So I don't, a hundred people uh, socially distanced. So I don't know what, what size tent he was looking at before.
Okay, so what are, what are our options then? We just uh, smaller set of tents if people have them or ask people to bring covering? I mean, we need something.
I would suggest that we ask people to bring umbrellas. And I mean, at the prices you're talking about, we'd be, we'd be better up I would suggest that we ask people to bring umbrellas, and I mean, at the prices you're talking about, we'd be, we'd be better off buying everybody an umbrella.
Um yeah, I I think the um, people are able to go to the beach during a hot day and. And for the calls, I think we can put it out there that people should bring their own umbrellas.
Will we allow tents? If people wanna bring a ten by ten?
No, because I don't think that the school department's gonna want them to put stakes or anything, I mean. Yeah, they think. They need to hold them up. Um they can't, they can't stake tents on the field, that's too risky for the irrigation system.
Well, are we good without a tent? We wanna try to find a different way to go forward with this?
I I suggest that we go forward without the tent and ask people to bring their own shade, either umbrellas or. Or a lawn chair that has a a a top or something that they can uh keep themselves shaded with.
Any other comments?
Um I, my only comment is, we need to get like communication out to people about this quickly. I I know we asked for certain things last time and it didn't happen, so I think we have an opportunity, you know, with with three weeks. To do that, especially because, I mean, we know what the heat was like before and it's obviously hotter in August.
Uh we're.
Maybe we can get the school department to put the sprinklers on.
A big step implied?
Yeah, it'd be awesome, have a water party. Throw some chlorine in there, it'll be safe for everyone.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Communication is good. Um when can we start publicizing the special town meeting? I think the warrant is closed, that's the next topic is going through that. Is that something, I know Lucia's got an awful lot on her plate right now. Uh with the primary, the special election, the special town meeting. The presidential election and the fall town meeting, so.
And we can, we'll start putting stuff up on the website, our sign, we'll ask the schools to put it on their sign out front. And uh we'll get all the information out there.
And and for my edification, we had said that that was going to be August the twenty seventh or twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth.
Nine AM.
Okay, on that topic.
Okay, so on the warrant, um the first three articles, article one, prior year bills. Article two, separation expense, article three, collector bargaining, more or less placeholders right now. We don't have anything for any of those three. The next articles, four, five, six, seven, eight. Are um articles that were not taken up, these are the zoning articles, and uh so they'll all be on there. And then uh the, the last four, the bottom two, the Water and Sewer, I talked to them, those are gonna be pulled off. It, that'll be handled in October, and I did email the Chairman of the Conservation Commission and Jennifer, but Jennifer, Jennifer's on vacation. So those two articles they submitted will probably be pulled off also. We're not gonna have any capital. Uh plan amendment at this meeting, that'll be something that has to wait till October when we have a better idea from the state on uh revenues. And also that by law, uh it'll give us more time to uh review that, and that we'll put that on the October uh warrant. So I, I don't wanna do that until I hear back from them.
Mike, you're saying nine, ten, eleven, and twelve would come off?
Yes, yes. So in all effect, more, right now, four, five, six, seven, eight are definite articles. And um I just wanted to let the board know the finance committee's meeting Monday night to review those articles. At seven o'clock, if anyone uh is available, uh to uh sign into that meeting.
We have to, if if multiple people are on that, do we have to uh post an agenda or?
You don't have to post an agenda unless you were gonna deliberate and vote at a meeting, so you can attend any meeting you want, but. Um you just can't deliberate and vote with the other board members.
Okay.
We, we couldn't have quorum, Michael, if we have quorum, then we have to post.
Why would, why wouldn't it be the same, Renee?
Because anytime that a public body has discussion on on a uh a town-related issue and you have quorum, you need to post. That's why I pinged the EDC earlier.
Yeah, I know that, and okay.
Quorum for us is four. So keep that in mind.
Yep.
So I will not be at the FinCom, I'll be at the PBC meeting, so as long as one other, what's quorum for our board now, two?
Three.
Is it three? Okay, so as long as one other person is not going to FinCom, then I think they're okay.
I volunteer not to go.
Thank you, Brad, for your, thank you, Brad, for your sacrifice.
Quiz Brad this afternoon, he knows the articles down pat, he's got them all.
So uh Mike, the, I just have a question about um. So you talked about the collective bargaining agreement, why are we doing separation expenses again?
That that's just there as a placeholder, um chances are, we're not gonna have anything there.
Okay.
And uh Mike, is Paul and the planning board ready for the um for their?
Paul is all set and ready to go, yep.
They've already presented to FinCom two. The same night that we did the other one.
Who's presenting the various articles? Is um someone from the EDC doing the marijuana overlay, or is it all planning board?
No, the EDC will do the marijuana.
Okay.
Or the sponsor on it.
You mean cannabis?
What?
You mean cannabis?
No, it's marijuana, the marijuana bylaw.
Um, anything else, Mike?
That's it.
Alright, on to the newly renamed Select Board's report and mail. Um, Michael, anything?
Um, not, not too much, um I've got the app, we're gonna see a couple things coming in next week, um a. Um someone for the ADA Accessibility Committee, um someone would like to be appointed to that, I'll get, make sure that gets over to everyone. Um I'm also gonna be sending an application over to uh Fork and Bibbs for uh requests for uh location for them. Um hopefully be speaking to them the next day or so, and uh I did speak with uh Mike, um like you would say. About possibly uh looking at um how we can be um be more efficient and more direction on setting uh goals and expectations. Um for uh certain departments within, in departments and seeing how we uh as a select board can help him. Um and Mike's doing a great job and really uh managing a lot of thought directors. See how we can kinda set them and make sure that direction's very clear, um for when we do reviews at years and for bonuses and so forth.
Let's just clarify, uh there is no bonuses for.
I don't mean bonuses, I apologize.
I.
That's my private sector uh vocabulary moving in there, so.
Their, their merit increases or whatever it is just up before anyone grabs onto that and thinks that.
Thank, thank you for the correction, yes, and uh. You know, I look forward to possibly working uh with the whole board and and Mike and kinda working on those items.
I think that's a, a great idea. Uh Brad, anything?
Not much, mailbox, there's no mail.
Alright, uh Renee, how about you?
No, Jack, I'm fine.
Alright, uh I have one item that came up, uh probably a week or, week or so ago. The property that the town owns on Mansfield Ave, um can that be used by the public? To launch car top, uh like kayaks and boats and things like that?
Yes, it can, yeah.
Okay, so they, people can park there and and put in the water, okay?
Which, just for more, uh is that the one next to you, um Jasmine, or is that?
No. Next down across from Cumberland Farms.
Oh, okay, alright, the rep, yeah, okay.
Is a, it's about two thirty-seven Mansfield Ave, right? It's something else.
It's the one where the Parks and Rec sign is hanging, Norton Parks and Recs, it's probably the easiest to identify.
Um, also, uh can, can I just, um Jack, can I just add one more thing?
Certainly.
Um, there has been a request uh from a resident to look and see if we can address on the launch on Juniper. Um look and see if we can, what's happening is there is no diagram for parking, which takes up one of the loading ramps. Um and we look to kind of address that kinda going forward, and I'm hoping to uh speak with this resident and see if we can get more guidance on that. See if it makes sense to, see if if what they're recommending is an easy fix or not.
Great, and I know um, was it, Jen had sent a note to a number of folks. Last week about outstanding actions from that. So I think, I don't know what, where, where that stands, if we own any of those actions, Mike, I think a lot of it was with. The police and fire, or probably mostly the police for monitoring and enforcement.
And getting the uh Keith the language that he needs for signage.
Okay, okay.
So does he have that now for the signage?
And that's what the bylaw changes about also.
Gotcha. Alright, very good, that's it for me. Uh warrants and minutes, so um. I grew payroll warrants PR twenty-one zero-three for the week ended July twenty fifth, twenty twenty. Warrant dated July thirtieth, twenty twenty in the amount of seven hundred thirty-three thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Invoice warrant AP twenty-one dash zero-five dated July thirty, twenty twenty. In the amount of one million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. And invoice warrant AP twenty-one dash zero-six dated August sixth, twenty twenty in the amount of. Four hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. Um that second invoice, or the first invoice warrant was uh considerably higher due to, I believe it was uh. Uh benefits payments uh that month. Any questions on those? Seeing none, um minutes, has anyone spared a minute to look at minutes?
Has anyone had a spare minute to look at minutes? I have not, I had, I had every intention and. With the recent other meetings to get information, I have not.
Okay, so yeah, so let's um. At least try to get through March and May, next meeting, so we can be at least within the same season, it'd be good to close those out.
Seasons?
Yeah.
We got that, October twenty nineteen.
I don't even know what month it is.
Oh, it's all a blur, I mean.
It is. So we're, we're meeting um. On the twentieth next, right? Did, did we take some things off of this agenda that we wanted to try to get back on or no?
I, I'm not aware of anything specific that came off. I know we have um talked about trying to have Chief Simmons in to talk about. The temporary positions that were made uh towards the end of last fiscal year. They need to come back before the board if they are to be made permanent, so if we can get that on, I know that's been a hot topic for some folks. I'm fine if we wanna meet next week to try to, to catch up, if we did have to pare this one down a little bit, or if we can wait till the twentieth. Um I have no social life, so this is my way of putting it.
I already have two meetings next week, so if uh, if we don't need to do it, then I say no.
Okay.
But if we need to, um I'm willing to do it on Thursday.
Alright, that's up to the pleasure of the board, um.
Well, Mike, uh you guys, you just wanna come back to us on Monday unless know if there are topics that need to be. Heard, and then if not, then we just defer to the original twentieth?
Yeah, that'll be helpful, yep, we'll let you know on Monday.
Okay, that will give us a couple days.
Okay. The, there is a public hearing scheduled for August twentieth, twenty twenty. On the application for a transfer of the retail package goods store license to expose, keep for sale, and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages. Not to be drunk on premises at um for Barrowsville Station, transfer of ownership. So we will be having that public hearing on August twentieth. Uh is there any other business that come before the board this evening?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Peter.
Jack, that's right, um and I heard that the Norton School Committee during a meeting would get a hybrid model of a formal review of a broad after. Four weeks of data.
Excellent.
That's right, and also, and also during Isaiah's which hit on Tuesday, I didn't lose any power.
Very good, you're one of the lucky ones.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, I do, I do believe we, we do have one thing outstanding that was moved from this weekend, that was um the appointment of the water commissioner, so. Um, we probably coordinating with uh Mr. Grant and Mr. Bishop on that, if they can be here on the twentieth versus the thirteenth. See where that goes. Alright, alright. Anybody else? Hearing nothing, uh Chair would entertain a motion to end the. August sixth meeting of the Select Board.
The moved.
Second.
Alright, we'll go to the roll, Michael?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
I two vote yes, uh there's the gavel, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Wonderful night, and uh.
Thanks, guys, have a great night.
Have a good night, everybody, good night, Mike, Mike, Brad, Jack, Renee, and Joe and the gang, and Shane and the gang, I hope you all have a wonderful night.